Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council for February 13th, 2012. We'll be meeting in a series of committee meetings tonight, and the first one will be Finance and Personnel. I'm acting as President Pro Tem in President Sands' absence this evening. Chairwoman and I speak for Finance and Personnel.
Thank you very much. Tonight, our first presentation is from Thomas Rabby, who is coordinating this year's Beautification Day that's coordinated by Ohio University. And welcome, and come on up, and why don't you present with us some of the details? I know this year you have a strong community component that you want to build into this, so it sounds exciting.
Definitely, definitely. First off, I just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to present here. But I'll tell you what, I've never been in this room, and cameras can be quite intimidating, so yeah, I'm gonna do my best. As said before, my name is Thomas Rabby. I'm this year's Director of Athens Beautification Day 2012. I am the Commissioner for Off-Campus Life of Student Senate at Ohio University. I'm a first-year MPA student, Master of Public Administration student at the George Board of the School for Public Administration and Leadership, and I'm also the Graduate Assistant for the Mayor's Partnership for Progress, which Mayor Wile is a member of, he's actually on the executive floor of the Mayor's Partnership for Progress. So briefly, I just want to go over the agenda of my slides. As you can see here, I'm gonna go over the background information of Athens Beautification Day, the history, because I know some of you are new to the council, the date, time, and location of this year's events, project locations, activities, how to sign up, what's different in 2012 than in years past, the committee team descriptions, committee team leaders, and how you can help, and then closing with questions. I promise it'll be pretty fun. So Athens Beautification Day started in 2005 by Ohio University's men's water polo team, which I had no idea. I've been a member of, an active member of this event before for the last three years, and I had no idea that it was first started by the men's water polo team. In its first year, the event hosted over 150 volunteers on nine different projects and received over 17 sponsors throughout the entire city. This year, 2012, marks our eighth consecutive year hosting this event organized in Athens, Ohio. Here are our goals this year, big goals, and they continue to get bigger each year. And I don't know, some of you may have known last year's director, Brad Evans, but he set the bar high last year. But this year, we're gonna try to top it. 550 volunteers, 30 projects throughout the city, 30 different sponsors, and raise over $5,000. That is this year's goal of 2012. So, you need to know the date, time, and location, so here it is. This year's event will be on April 28th, 2012. Check-in will be at 10:30 a.m., and the pep rally will be at 11:00 a.m. Mayor Wile is actually scheduled to speak. The jamboons will be there, and they have confirmed that they're gonna be there and participate and DJ the event beforehand. And the location is at the Scripps Amphitheater. We were supposed to have it there last year, but due to poor weather, it actually got moved into the Bromley Center on campus. So this year, we're trying to move back to Scripps Amphitheater, hopefully praying for good weather at the Scripps Amphitheater this year. Wrap-up around 2:30, and this is tentative, last point is, we're gonna wrap up with food and drink specials provided at the Pigskin. Like I said, that's tentative right now. Project locations and activities. I know it's small, and I'm not gonna go through all of them, but this is kind of what we do. This is what Athens Beautification is all about. You have Court Street cleanups, you have graffiti removal, but you also have passion works volunteers, when they go coordinate a volunteer activity on that day. Cleanups, landscaping, mulching. We're expanding, this event's getting bigger, and we're expanding throughout the entire city of Athens. So, volunteering and signing up. Last year, it was our first year, we registered online, and we're gonna continue to do that this year. What's important from this slide is to register. You go to athensbday eventbrite.com, and I'm gonna follow, these next couple of slides will show you how to sign up. So, when you go to athensbday eventbrite.com, this page will pop up. This is a screenshot from last year's, but it's very similar to the one this year. What you're gonna do, it has the information of the event listed there, has the location of the event, but what's important on this slide is the register button. Big orange, you click that. Once you click that, this screen will show up with registration information. Simply, just put your first name, last name, and right down here, it says work information. If you want to volunteer with a specific group, let's just say Athens City Council wanted to make a team that they wanted to volunteer with, so they would go into work information and put in Athens City Council. Then, other information that's also important is the tee-shirt size. That just logistically helps me out. So once you submit that information, this is kind of like an insider, what I'm gonna see inside of Eventbrite, but it organizes it perfectly for me. It has your name, how many people sign up with your group, your tee-shirt size, and makes it very easy for me. So what's different in 2012 and in previous years? Well, this year's event is taking place during the city's spring cleaning week. I got on the phone with Ron Lucas about six months ago. I wanted to know what would be a good weekend for Athens Beautification Day, and who directed me to this week. He said, "It makes sense for you to host it on Saturday because of last year's success, but have it during the city's spring cleaning week, so we can advertise with you." So that's what we're doing. Additionally, we split up our volunteer recruitment team into two separate teams. A student outreach team, we've always had heavy student involvement, but this year, our goal is to outreach to permanent residents as well. So I specifically have divided the volunteer team into two separate sections, one for student outreach and another for permanent resident outreach. Briefly, as you can imagine, here's my team descriptions. Fundraising team, obviously handles finances, volunteer, as I just said, outreach. Projects will be responsible for having like a team captain at each one of the project locations, so logistics goes smooth, and a PR team that promotes Athens Beautification Day. And this is just to give you names with kind of like a title. These people are on Student Senate with me, and you may be familiar with some of them, but Jen White, Kelsey Higgins, Rachel Ackerman, Mel Ruberg, and Tony Kohling are my team captains, as well as I have 20 other committee members. So I am chairing Athens Beautification Day, but I have a lot of help with me. I have 25 students that are helping me coordinate this event. So how can you help? I would like to see you, first, volunteer. I'm sure, I know some of you have volunteered in the past, I would love to see you as a team volunteer. So, sign up at athensbday eventbrite.com, get a team together. I think it'd be great to see you guys come out and work on a project together. Secondly, donate. Oh, man, you knew that was coming, right? There's different donation levels and sponsorship levels. You have been a proud supporter of this event in the years past, and we hope that that continues. The different sponsorship levels, I will give you details, but Platinum, basically fire plus, you get a logo on the back of the tee-shirt, a logo on the sign that hangs above Court Street, to a participant where you get a little sign you can hang in your wall or something, or in your car, or a bumper sticker. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm willing to take questions if you have them.
Councilmembers, any comments or questions? Ken?
I might briefly, well, first of all, thank you for your hard work, and I really appreciate the web presence. I think that's gonna be very beneficial and seems to be, I think, a succinct way and very beneficial method of getting people signed up and involved. I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding too is that club sports at the university is required to participate and do so many volunteer hours, and this is a great opportunity for members in various club organizations throughout campus to get involved, and is that correct?
That is, that is correct. As well as fraternities and sororities are required to have philanthropy hours, so normally that's where we see a large number of student involvement, is from student organizations and fraternities and sororities on campus. So yes, that's where the majority of our involvement, student involvement comes from, is student orgs and fraternities and sororities.
Super. So will you then be able to reach out to them specifically, or is there a venue as well to reach to them?
That's what I will be doing for the next two and a half months, is going to their chapter meetings, presenting a relatively same presentation to them, and getting them involved, getting them on the bus, and getting them to participate in this event. Reception has always been great from student orgs on campus.
Super. Thank you.
Can we be reminded how much we've donated in the past?
We've done a thousand in the past. If you look, the, I appropriated in the 650 fund, Lauk's Trust Fund, which is a beautification fund, there's a thousand dollars I appropriate for this event.
And that trust fund has been specifically set up?
For beautification.
For beautification.
Yes.
So, it's not coming out of the general fund?
No, it wouldn't. If anything, if I was gonna look at an alternate fund, I suspect that we'd end up in the tourism, one possibility. What's the other one? The enhancement fund, which I forget the number is right now. But again, we set aside this much for that reason. Okay? Does that help? I think one of the other questions, of course, is getting good outreach to the neighborhood associations and, as you say, the full-time residents as well. So I assume they're gonna be working on that. You have a PR member doing that?
Yes, and I also would like the contact, that's where you can help me, is giving me those contact information, those people I need to contact.
I will email you, I can email him the names.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be fantastic. I would love to go to their meetings and present as well.
I got 411-206. Yeah, got it.
And also, with, you're working with off-campus housing?
Yes.
CA.
John Hummel and his CA start participating as well.
Well, we thank you very much for your coordinating this this year. And I think we briefly spoke about the graffiti teams that have been done in the past, and I think a lot who you've helped with that, some of the painting teams. And the only thing we had happen last year, we had ample supply of paints, we didn't have enough rollers and pans and paintbrushes, and maybe some gloves, and just advising anybody who signs up on the graffiti teams to know that they're gonna be around paint all day.
Sure.
And so they might dress with grubby clothes.
So for donations, that's a good idea to keep in mind for donations.
Supplies, definitely.
Yep.
Again, the weather was not the best, it was at Bromley Hall, as you said, it was a good turnout, amazing turnout.
It was an amazing turnout. It's wonderful. It's wonderful to see that kind of community spirit, and we'll do what we can to work with you and to let the information out to the neighborhood associations as well.
Could we also see if we can get the link on our webpage?
That'd be a good thing to do.
I assume Scott's back there and he hears it.
Okay.
He's under your fur.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Okay. The next agenda item for Finance Committee is three or four miscellaneous items, and I'll be asking Scott Thompson for some of the information on this. The four items that we'll be needing to be appropriating money for, one is a thousand dollars, and we appropriate this to the water fund, 740, and that's for sewer and garbage refunds for utility bills that we need to make to customers who might be closing out accounts, moving away, moving to another residence. We also have approaching for us a three-year maintenance contract for our computer system software, and that's with GBI, and that will be out of Fund 865. And then we also have a three-year maintenance of our Sophos antivirus system software out of Fund 865. And this company, as Scott has described, has helped us keep our city website plague-free, I guess is what you would call it, without the viruses, and has pretty much been a seamless kind of operation for us, and very reliable. It's not something we can really do without. And Scott's gonna talk to us about the last item, which is $25,000, which will be coming out of Fund 215, which is our cable access funds. These are the revenues that come into the city for a specific purpose from cable, and so it's appropriate that they would go, be in turn then appropriated out to this kind of website development. So Scott, could you give us some of the details?
Sure. In a nutshell, we're going to redevelop our website. We've basically, to back you up, probably about a year ago, we started looking at our current site, some of the needs, some of the feedback we've been receiving, and started looking at, you know, what can we do better, what's working, what's not working, those kinds of things. Searched out a couple companies, did some research, and probably towards the end of last year, end of November, one of the companies had an extreme website makeover contest. And basically, the contest was, you know, tell us why you need a new website, basically an essay kind of thing. So, talked to the company, submitted an application, and they came down, well, we did a WebEx of their software and what their interface looked like. And while we didn't win, we came in like top 10, basically, so we received a 25% discount on service. So, we decided to pursue that, assembled a web team to kind of look at, you know, what some of our goals and needs and wants are, and had a demonstration, had our representative come down and give us a demonstration from Civic Plus. And across the board, I think pretty much the departments and people involved are very impressed with the advancements that we can have with this website. There's probably, probably one of the biggest things are, the new website will allow us a better two-way communication than we have right now. Right now, we have a little bit of form submitted and that sort of thing, people that sign up for agendas. The new site will allow the user to select basically what content they want to see from the website. It's like a customizable dashboard feature. So as you log into the site, you can choose, say you're, I'll give you an example, a recreation parent, you have a lot of recreation programming kids are doing or something like that, you can open up your dashboard and customize it to see recreation, sign-ups, deadlines, whether programs are canceled, maybe the soccer season is raining, you get alerts, and that can be all customized to the user. So that's a huge, huge tool that we don't have right now. Users can sign up for email or text notifications if soccer's canceled. And we can't do that right now. It's a much more cumbersome process for the rec, Community Center to do that. So, there's a lot of, lot of two-way interaction features that are a big advance over what we have right now, so we're pretty excited about it.
So likewise, the neighborhood associations that want to be able to get to the litter control forms or the pothole reporting forms right away, could put that on their dashboard, much as you say kind of a bookmark.
If you're, you know, somebody, a contractor, and you know, you want to keep an eye on bid openings or those kind of RFP kind of things, yeah, you open up your dashboard and you'll see those newest postings. It's something we haven't been able to do, and it's really, really pretty neat.
Yeah, I've just kind of messed around on our website, it's clunky.
It is clunky. That would be a good word.
It's clunky.
It's clunky.
Do you have a listing, does this group that you're, the company that you're proposing to work with, work with other municipalities?
Yeah, they do.
And so, okay, they're familiar with.
And I wanted, what was the name of that again?
Civic Plus.
Civic Plus, with a plus or P-L-U-S?
Spelled out, yeah.
And I believe Scott sent, at least I know, to the team a series of website links to other city websites, so you may want to shoot it to.
Sure, I can do that.
Let the server play and see what we need to come up with.
That would be helpful, we can take a look at it.
I told him to send you the Maui one.
That would be a site that's.
One thing is, are they planning on doing, sending out a short survey or something that would question, like, what we would like to see on it?
If you want to shoot me feedback, that'd be great. I'll tell you this, kind of you open the door, that one of the features of the new site is that we can have virtual town hall meetings. So this is one of those things where you can go out and do a lot of surveying and information back and forth. So that's one of the things that we're, it's kind of nice to, we'll be able to do in the future.
Or kind of ward reports, or something that we can access to give information to, specifically our wards? Sort of? Because that's something that I've been approached by several people, is that communication is very difficult, you know, we can't necessarily send out newsletters or, but, you know.
There is a mechanism in this for newsletters. So if you were to publish a newsletter for, you know, 4th Ward, and anybody that lived in the 4th Ward in their dashboard, they can sign up for these notifications that unless you're, you live in the 1st Ward, want to see the 4th Ward stuff, nobody else would ever see it, you know, it's very customized.
That's good to hear.
And Scott? Do you have some sense as to, from beginning to end, how long a project like this might take?
We are probably a nine-month process, so.
Including beta testing as well?
It'll be, when it's rolled out, it'll be done, as far as we're concerned. There's a timetable that goes along with the process of it, plus, one of the big positive comments we got back when we talked to other reference cities, was that they were very good about keeping their timetable, and kept, as a city, they kept you, you know, on track, and they didn't let you, you know, fall asleep and get behind, because they, you know, were pretty good about their timetables.
So my follow-up question to that, because it seems like with these contracts that go on with this different kind of internet, whatever, that's being built, is a lot of times there's additional costs. So do these also, these other municipalities say that they stay within budget and?
Yeah, I didn't hear of anybody say they were over budget.
That's good.
Our current site will, we end our contract right now, June 1st, with the current provider we have, and we're planning on doing like a temporary site, and we'll probably house it in-house, just contacts, basic stuff, just to bridge that little bit of time that'll be over between we get into upping Civic Plus.
So when are you, is there a time period here in terms of when this, we're looking at this beginning, or?
The thought was just to begin the appropriation, starting next week.
Starting next week.
The ordinance for it.
Got it.
That would appropriate the money. Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott, too. I'm curious if you can help remind us, the current contract, which you said ends June 1st, we began, was it two, three years ago?
About three years ago, the site was up, so we started a relationship, you know, a period of time before that, so prior to that, we were hosting in-house.
And that was, and that was a huge advance, that the current website was a big step in the right direction.
Big advance from what we were doing before.
Correct.
Everything was, I think we've used a number of softwares, we ended up, where the last thing we were using was Dreamweaver, you know, some off-the-shelf type thing, and with the eGov link, the big step up was, you know, we could have, you know, online connections and stuff like that, where you could be pretty much anywhere on the world and update the website. So that was, that was a step up from what we were doing for sure, it, really able to spread, spread some of the postings and that sort of thing around.
Now, the miserly side of me doesn't like the idea of having to spend more money on something new, knowing that what we have currently is only three years old, but knowing that the tech world happens, things change very quickly, and there's advances and updates. I do see some of the benefit of the newer site, though I don't know if there's benefit financially from keeping the old, the old contract, but I haven't seen the numbers yet on the, between the two.
Our year-to-year numbers, the service agreement that we have right now to what we're going to be paying, I actually think it's a savings.
Okay.
I'll have to get you the exact numbers, but I think we're probably gonna end up paying less year-to-year service contracts with the new company than we have been.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Yes.
Ideas occur to me, do you think this website, new software, and obviously there's gonna be some new document management, something there will help us, lead us more to a more, if not paperless, at least less paper?
I would think so. I mean, there, one of the things that was interesting from our web group, and I think we had pretty good representation from all the city departments, is just that everybody was coming up with new ideas on how to do things with a new website. I mean, it was, there's tools in here that kind of spur, you know, ideas, and how we can advance communications, and then how we work internally, and also department to department, so, you know, I think we can, that might be one of the things that happens, sure.
You know, my dream is, just, all the documents here would just be electronic, and I have my iPad, and I just, oh, yeah, here it is, work with it, and go home. And we put me out of business, because I'm not buying paper anymore. Saving trees, no more waste. Are we getting towards that?
Depends on the user, I guess.
Okay. Let's say I'm a fairly good user, and I have the tools on my hand, is the backend ready for me to do that? Or will it be ready? I'll have the frontend, no doubt about it. Okay? Will the backend be there?
I think so. I mean, but again, it comes back to, you know, user preference. I mean, there's the people that are gonna work off their digital documents and be happy, then there's the people that are gonna get every email printed. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of the way it goes.
But I think this will certainly allow us more interface with the community.
Oh, sure.
And I think we've been, and something that's easier for us to use as well, so it in part answers your question, Jeff. And this will be important for us to link up with community members and the public, and prospective people who are looking at the community. It's even an economic and tourism, economic development and tourism tool in a way.
Chris, I have a question.
Sure.
So is this completely separate from the video, the online video?
Yes.
So that will be maintained?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess I'm kind of curious, since we're discussing the web presence, it'd be nice, I think, at some point to see sort of a review of the utilization of that.
Okay.
Just to see if it's worth an ongoing, I think it's great to have these archives online for people to see, but if no one ever watches them, I wonder if we're getting our best bang for our buck.
Okay.
So at some point in the future, it'd be nice to see that.
Sure.
Good comment. Thank you. And that's the last agenda I have.
The mayor isn't gonna ask for more finance personnel items?
I think we're gonna cover this under City Services.
Okay. So with that, I will move to the Finance and Development Committee. Chairwoman Chris Paul.
Great, thank you. First off, is I'm planning on introducing the wireless telecommunications next week as an ordinance. There were a couple questions that were asked the last time it was presented. Chief among those was whether we could require telecommunication towers to carry city services or city communication devices. In the planning, the law director says no, unless we want to go through a takings or eminent domain process. However, if it's on city property, we can do it through a leasing, part of the lease agreement with any organization. So, seeing how the process encourages the telecommunications companies to use city property before other property, so that does give us a way of hopefully putting, reducing the amount that we have to put up in sharing hardware. The other questions were relatively minor, that was the major one. The ordinance has been reviewed by the law director, he says that it's good to go. So after a year and a half, we will start the readings process next week. Do you have any? Revocable license. I love revocable licenses. Last week, we talked about renewal of the revocable licenses for use of municipal lands and public right-of-ways. This week, we have a new application for revocable license and use of public right-of-way by Horizon's Telecon Incorporated out of Chelacopee, not to be confused with Horizons, but Horizons. And basically, this is to bore under State Route 56, over by the ODOT garage, also to put a pole over by the Veterans of Foreign Wars building, and to do a bore by Shaffer Street, is that right? Under Shaffer. And so they're doing telecommunications infrastructure development. I know that there was one concern that they have appropriate insurance for all this, and that all the notes by Andy Stone are enforcer of certain infrastructure development, goes with the license, so that all his notes about potential interactions with things such as sewers and, what, a pump substation, that it goes with the license. And so it's been. And so it's been signed off by everybody else in town, so I will bring that up as an ordinance. It will be 10 years.
So it seems like the revocable licenses we've seen previously have been for more temporary things, but this seems like a permanent, semi-permanent installation of cable or fiber-optic or something?
Fiber optic.
Is that, do we have other examples of this in the city where we issue a revocable license for something like that?
I think many, many of the poles that we've put up, not we, though, Horizon, Verizon, whoever, put up, they have to go through this process. So we do have a whole list of ones, this is just a, a new one, and it is for fiber-optic, so.
So is, is it running along, I'm thinking of the rail bed, because the sites that you mentioned, is that where it's running, along that rail bed?
Do you want to describe it?
Well, I mean, we have the map, what is-
Here's the maps.
And we also have, to your question, like a utility corridor for a high university at the corner of Bromley, that one's kind of been delayed while we work out that versus a handicapped accessible ramp that is, was erected in order to meet ADA compliance, so that, that one, we'll see. And it's actually good practice to have that, when you know utility is in your right-of-way to have it hard and fast. With this one, what's critical, and thank you, Chris, for pointing out, is that they were putting the burden back on the utility company to not hit our buried lines because, you know, it's old and we're, it could be here, it might not, and so they're going to have the culpability of, of repairing those if that's what happens during this. We'll have eyes on the ground during that, so.
I just remember, because when we were on the BCA, we gave them the-
Well, that's what the mayor was just saying, connect the dots.
If I'm connecting the dots, and so obviously that's a very old part of town and there are possibility of hitting something.
Right. And they, as they say, you know, know before you dig, and when they dig and they hit something, they will be responsible for it.
Another example of an easement, I believe, was the easement to the steam tunnels going to the ridges, probably about five to 10 years ago, they wanted to connect their steam system that's on this side of the river to that one on the other side, so they utilized the bridge on Ridgeland.
Ridgeland Bridge.
With several rights away between, as a, again, to connect the dots. So it's not like we just give right-of-ways to signs, there are some more permanent features out there. Again, the Union Street by Bromley Hall easement for their utility tunnel to connect Bromley Hall to their steam system as well.
So, so is this a, so revocable license, is that acting as an easement?
Yeah.
The revocable license itself is the easement in this?
Yes. It's a little bit of a temporary nature, but it's, it actually what happens is in a city right-of-way, so it falls under your purview.
It will be for 10 years, and then it will come up as a renewal, so.
Who knows, in 10 years, fiber optics may be obsolete.
Yes, everything's beaned.
Do they leave it in the ground in that case, or do they take it away with them?
Well, I don't know if they need the plastic or not.
So, okay, I'm connecting the dots again. So it's going under 56 by ODOT, so it's going up into the hill there, into the ridges? Is there a tower up there?
No, it sounded like it was getting, going down the Union.
Back into town.
Back into town. What was the other pole, was, here they, was it?
Across from, yeah, the, the F W.
And I believe there's a substation being put in on Lawton's property on South, is this North Shaffer or South Shaffer?
Sheen, that's with the BZA.
That's what we, yes, right.
So that's, that's where it's going to end up here.
I believe it's part of the whole medical broadband.
That's correct.
And activities.
So, so I guess that's triggered another little question. I think I saw this company on State Street a year ago or so, I'm not sure if it's the same one.
You did.
Do we know everywhere they have their lines in the city? And should we, is this, do they have a, I assume this would not be public information, but?
No, they provided us maps from the very beginning, and fortunately, some of their workers were a little rogue last year when they were getting on the bike path and what have you, so I think they're aligned now.
Okay. Just, I just want to make sure there's open communication so that we know what's, what's where.
Any more questions on that?
Okay, the, the agenda item I have is kind of some bookkeeping or housekeeping from the Service Safety Director and Andy Stone, to change the city code Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 704.21, which describes how right turns are prohibited in the town, in the city of Athens. And basically, what they would like to do is to change the wording to make it, right now, the code is very prescriptive about which streets exactly have right turns prohibited. They would like the wording to be changed so that in the future, we would not have to amend the code once more to include that street. They would like to change the wording to, unless a sign as prescribed by the Service Safety Director is necessary and appropriate, is in place prohibiting a right turn, vehicular traffic facing a steady red signal may cautiously enter the intersection to make a right turn after stopping. Such vehicular traffic shall yield the right-of-way to pedestrians lawfully within an adjacent crosswalk to other traffic lawfully using the intersection. So basically, it's making a right on red unless there's signs prohibiting at the specific site, so. Instead of making the, right now, there's a whole list of streets, which, so it just cleans up the code.
And, and as I understand, that list is from 1975.
Yes.
And so it's very, very out of date.
Very out of date.
And this will give us a generic or a universal enough kind of language to, to place the signage where we do not want to allow it and to give that authority to the Service Safety Director.
And I think it's more proactive because if there's changes in traffic patterns or something because of whatever development or, you know, street closures or stuff, then it can be, it can be signed and makes it much more proactive on the side of the city, so. I will bring that up.
Chris, the police chief is soon to language, I believe.
Yes.
That was my question. Well, and actually, you could probably, I mean, it's one thing, you know, I'm here today, but who's here in the future, kind of thing. I don't operate in a vacuum, but you could include language that says, after consulting with the city engineer and the police chief of police, so that you have more than one individual and they're kind of identified. And that would, that makes perfect sense, because that's what I do.
But I think it's also important to make sure that only one person is responsible-
Has the authority.
You know, has the authority, otherwise, well, the police chief and the city engineer and, do we have to have a committee meeting? I mean, it helps to have ultimate responsibility. It makes sense for your office to do it, too. I, I would assume most, you know, that this sort of thing is probably brought by the police chief.
Or the city engineer.
The city engineer. You're not running around looking at where we should turn right.
Well, you don't run around looking.
Not necessarily that. So I think this, as it stands, it seems pretty straightforward, so.
Any other questions?
And that's, I don't have any miscellaneous unless somebody else does. The well head protection is going to bring-
I'm sorry, it is coming in the next committee meeting.
Committee meeting, yes, so.
Which would be first, then March, the 27th. 27, thank you.
So we will have a presentation on that. Thank you. Bring your popcorn. That's all for my planning and development committee.
Thank you. So we'll move to the last committee meeting tonight, and that is the City and Safety Services, chaired by Kent Butler.
Thank you. I believe one of our items will be shared with, by member Nysley regarding some water system improvements. There was a meeting earlier this week in which she participated in, I believe, with the auditor, correct?
Sure. Yes, I can get some of the details on it, and this will be a, a team effort here because the City Service Safety Director and the mayor also have some information on this. The Department of Public Works, in their forward-thinking way, has looked at the improvements that we've made to the water lines and now is looking at three other areas that are on hills and have cast iron pipes from the 1950s. And what they have been looking at is the possibility of approaching this project as a one, one at a time project, areas one, two, and three, or all three. And they have been looking at funding mechanisms through low-interest loans offered through the EPA. So what I'll review briefly here tonight is an overview of the three different projects and what the improvements would be, and try as best I can summarize the meeting that took place with the auditor, the deputy auditor, the Service Safety Director, and myself to review these, these items. We have a map that's projected for us, and if we could maybe, can we see that on the screen at all for a minute? So that others can see it?
On the, on the TV screen?
On the TV screen, can we able, are we able to look at that? What I'll do is describe each of the areas. Area number one is McGuffey, Ransom, and Harris. And this would be upgrading existing six-inch water lines to eight-inch, and it would include installation of four new hydrants. One hydrant exists in this location right now, and that would be 1,800 lineal feet of water line replaced. Area two is the Joneswood Terrace Riverview area, and that would be upgrading a six-inch water line to eight-inch and including the installation of seven new hydrants. There are six existing right now, and that would be 3,500 lineal feet, thirty, close to 3,600. And then area three is on West Union Street, and that would be upgrading an existing 10-inch water line to 12-inch, and it would include the installation of four new hydrants where three are existing right now. So all total for all three projects, we are looking at 6,970 lineal feet. When we first started discussing the project, we looked at the cost estimates, and there is some economy to be gained by doing all three projects at once and taking on one loan. The difficulty, not difficulty, but the, the responsibility was to say, is it, is it something that the city can afford? And the projected cost estimates would be, just for the, for one site, would be $329,000. If we did two sites, it would be $659,000, and if we do the entire thing, it's about Now, we have submitted a preliminary application to the water supply revolving loan account, and they offer a three and a quarter percent interest rate. That is not as low as some of the interests we've had for a few of our other loans, but those loans that we've had at the very low, less than 1%, have been from local loan funds and are often due within a year. Obviously, this one being a larger amount of money is going to be a longer-term loan, and so the amount's a little higher. And the purpose of the meeting that we held last week then was to say, here are the documents that are required from the loan application organization, they request a financial analysis showing that we can afford to do this. They don't want to put the city in financial jeopardy, nor would they want a loan defaulted on sometime in the near future. So Jessica Adine and Andy Stone in the Public Works Department worked with the auditor and deputy auditor to look through the projections from looking at our past history of our water fund and our rates for 2008, '09, '10, and '11, and then also doing projections then, if we would take this project on, what, what this would do to our funds out through 2022. And the, it, it looks like a credible project, it looks like an affordable one. It would be based on the premise of a 3% annual water fund increase, which is not as much as some, some municipalities auditor Hector reported on have actually seen 40% increases in their water rates. So the 3% would still be within a very reasonable amount and would afford us that repairing these last three areas would really put the city's water supply in good, in what they feel is good shape, have the infrastructure in the place that it needs to be. So the timeline for this, which is why I wanted to present the information, so the sum, the result of that meeting with the auditor and deputy auditor was that they said, we've looked at the analysis, we've, we've helped prepare it, and they feel that this is a reasonable project to do all three of them at once, get it done. So we aren't subjected to, you know, the middle of night, emergency kind of overtime procedures of, it's got to be fixed, it's got to be fixed right now because it's 1950s cast iron pipes and it's in need of immediate replacement. The deadlines for us to be applying, if council would authorize for us to move ahead with, with this, would be that we would submit a complete, what's called a capability assurance plan, and that includes a technical, managerial, financial sections, and we would be required to submit that by March 1, which is why we're taking a look at this now and trying to reach a decision. And then we'd submit the complete detail plans by March 15th. And then the, submitting the complete loan application fund by April 1, and then we would request the construction loan on June 1, and that's when the, the deadline is locked, it would also lock in our interest, our low-interest rates, but if we don't meet that June 1 deadline, then we'd have to renominate the project for another year. It's obviously something that the Department of Public Works feels like we should probably proceed with. Yes?
I just wanted to do a few clarifications. As, as Councilmember Nysley stated, we sent, they submitted for this to the EPA. The EPA ranked us very high as a complete package, so one of our fears was if we were to try to break this apart, this funding may not be in place in the future, so. We're, we're top-ranked and we're eligible for this. They, actually, EPA has a 20-year loan, and they don't let you pay it back early, so even though we would have the capability to, similar to, we pay $24,000 a year for the-
Curbs, Mulligan Road.
Yes, we can't, even though we have more money than we could, they don't allow it. So it actually will go out to 2033. And lastly, this will still, based on the numbers, be allowed, you know, we'll still have operating funds that we'll be able to utilize to, for other improvements as we go along, but.
About, I think, two years ago, I know that there was a GIS map put together of all the water line breaks, and these were some of the areas that showed up repeatedly. Harris and Ransom, as you know, I don't know how many times you've gone down there and seen it all torn up and water coming down the street. We know about Joneswood and Terrace because it's on a hill and slip ground. Parts of Union, not all of Union, which is one of my concerns, because I know some of the parts that are busted have not, are not in the scope, but some of all the areas are underfed and need to be enlarged. Again, it's a 20-year loan we're going for. The conversation that took place in the, the meeting was that it would free up a lot of the overtime and, and operating cost of our street water crews to fix this problem. And when I say, I said street, because also streets, we've lost parts of the street when these things bust. So the anticipation is that we're trying to be proactive in our maintenance and get this done, so we don't have time to spend on other projects, so to speak, or not overtime on these projects.
Just one point on, you just mentioned the water breaks that we've seen in these areas over the years. Director Stone told me that these cost upwards of several thousand dollars each time it happens in supplies and, and emergency crews and everything, so.
Mm-hmm.
It is a high cost, but in terms of the long-term cost to have our infrastructure in the city where it needs to be, personally, I, I think it's probably money well spent. Mark Patterson?
I just had a question, because I, I don't know and don't understand. I understand the fact that these are old cast iron pipes that ever existed, and they're in chronic slippage areas within the city of Athens, where there's, in other words, a lot of landslide on the hillsides. Can you give me some sense as to what kind of pipe is going back in to replace these? Are these, you know, some kind of reinforced case pipes or piping, aside from them just being larger pipes?
It is a more, it is a more flexible material. I did ask the same question at the meeting, and it's a more, obviously more flexible than the cast iron at this point. And I think it does have, is it some kind of plastics in it? I don't, don't know that it's entirely plastic, though.
I would assume most of it's plastic. I think that's what they've been replacing regularly.
Okay.
And I think they're trying to put, they, they always put a line in there so you can detect it by metal, with a metal detector. We could probably get more specs on it if you want.
I think cast iron's usually rated at about 100 years in the ground. You can't get any more out of that, and that's under perfect conditions. If you're putting in something that's more like a PVC, it's 10,000 years.
Yeah, my-
The next question will be here before it rocks.
My, my question was, was again based upon what member Gosny was saying, that it's, it's better to be proactive, and I agree with that, and I, I think we should, you know, I'm hoping that we're being proactive with a stronger resource as opposed to- hoping that we're being proactive with a stronger resource as opposed to what's currently in place to make it extend, let's go 200 years.
As well as increase the water flow for fire protection, too. That's, you know, all the water, all these areas have adequate, but the fact is, you know, we always want to keep it up as best possible. I don't know what else to add to that.
Just that an asphalt overlay will be on all these streets after this is completed. So, again, it's part of the whole project, which you've asked for in the past in terms of...
When, I'd like also to point out that when we do these improvements and increase hydrants and water flow for fire, that insurance, municipal and homeowner insurance do look at this when they do community rating. So, when we do these sort of improvements, it does reflect, if you don't have, you know, fire response time and efficient hydrogen system, then your insurance tends to go up. So, I'd like to, you know, I always want to, this brings it right down to the people and their pocketbook, it's not only are we, you know, improving the infrastructure, but in the long run, it also reflects on homeowner insurance, fire insurance for business and homeowners.
Well, area one, McGuffey, Ransom, and Harris, basically, they say one hydrant exists at this location, go to four.
Right, and that's pretty pathetic.
I could say that's a little bit of improvement.
Yes, so, I think it increases public safety, not only, so.
One question I have was, since we're improving the system, that means there's still, what, 50% of the pipe still on the ground is old?
Quite a bit of it is, yeah.
A lot of it. So, we're having sort of a mixed bag here. We got new and we got old. The new is rated, has a higher capacity, so that means we could have a greater volume of water in the total system. Won't that stress the old system, the old pipes?
It probably depends on the, I don't know enough about the engineering at this point. I had asked the same question about the West Union because I think the area of West Union we're talking about is between Depot to Schaefer, and I'm aware of there, between High Street and Depot, there's been breakages there. So, the question arose, well, why are we doing this section, not that section? But he points out, basically, he says, well, there's 10-inch line there, but it's also a 4-inch line further down towards Schaefer. It's a real mess down there in terms of how it works. I think I've seen, I've seen the street crews down there where one of these pipes, actually, an older pipe goes under the house, and part of the feed is one side of the house, and the other side gets another feed from another line. So, there's a little bit of confusion. So, we try to clean things up as well. There'll always be overlap of older pipe and newer pipes. The question is, you know, you know, what stresses out?
Right.
So, hopefully, we'll replace the other portions as time goes on.
Exactly.
If I may, I have a response. It is ductile iron pipe that will go in, so.
Okay, there you go.
It should still be...
Can I make you happy?
And may I ask, I did ask for this to be engineered to add as an alternative or an addition, that section up to High Street because of this problem.
I just wanted to say that, as I was listening to everything, I was thinking about constituents'
response to the constituents, and I think everything that's been brought up in terms of safety, the insurance system, the ratings, all those things are very important. And, and I liked what you said, too, in terms of how is one larger line feeding into a smaller line? And it seems like the folks that have been working on this from an engineering point of view have really looked at what needs to happen, and I like the comment about cleaning up the system because living in a neighborhood where they'd fix it, it'd blow up farther on down the line, and that went on for about two years or three, a long time, until they just did the whole line. And, you know, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, I appreciate the efforts in terms of the engineering aspects of that and really looking at where is, where's the best place to go with the money.
Yeah, I might echo that as well. I mean, adding 15 new hydrants is substantial, and from a safety perspective, it's immense.
As well as the valves in between, there's a whole series of valves that go to segregate when you do have a break. Some of those valves are much older, some are not really functional, they're good for one use maybe. I've watched them where they try closing one down, and they can't close it down because of the age of the valve. It doesn't get used often, but when it does, you want it to work. So, again, it's, we're always going to have to put more money into infrastructure over time, so this is a step. Our, if you look, our debt fund is fairly low. We went out on a limb with the Curtis Mulligan improvement there, but that was realized a half grant, half loan. So, this is another case where we can just move ahead and keep adding infrastructure, improving infrastructure. It's got to be done. Question's how we want to do it, when, and how fast. And I'm sure there'll be other areas, you know, in a few years as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments or questions, Member Gosney?
Yeah, just to point out that based on the estimates, it's roughly $150 per square foot, lyric, per linear foot. It's expensive stuff.
I'm up.
Anyone else, any other comments? I need to thank Member Nysley for presenting all that information, so thank you very much. I think the other thing I have to mention was that our Public Works Director had, I just want to plant a seed that we might need to do a second reading on Hickory Street project. I might request a, yes, thank you, suspension of the rules. Mostly, I think his intent is to get this project moving, especially with a mild winter we're encountering, so that was my understanding with that, so a little forewarning there. Member Gosney?
And I had a miscellaneous sort of transportation, but if I could take a minute of your committee here. This is an update on Oxbo Bridge project, the, I like to call it the Upper Richland Bridge, and just a few dates from our city engineer, our director of Public Works. The bid opening is March 6, so contractors will be selected shortly after, assuming that we get good bids, and we always do. Not always.
Sometimes.
We hope so.
We will. This is a huge project, and we will have bids in March, hopefully selected in March. One point is that we're using a, we're getting credit for the Carriage Hill Bridge repairs that we did of roughly $185,000, just a little bit under, and so, we're getting a credit on that to help pay for the, this Oxbo Bridge project with the federal grant money that we're receiving. And also, the construction will force the Richland Avenue to be closed in that section by the bridge from a projected June 11 through August 22. So, anyone out there, the press, people that are watching at home, you're going to be hearing about this as often as we can tell you. That's going to be a major detour for the summer months, several, many weeks in the summer. So, it will be a detour through Schaefer and West Union to try to route most traffic through. And also, one point for, for those at the university, that the access road under the bridge will be closed during this construction project as well. The city is working closely with the university, and they're part of the team to make sure this project goes well and as smoothly as possible. Anything that you'd like to add?
Just that I'm not going to have Richland Avenue closed and do West Union water line at the same time. I'm going to praise this to the man that it makes sense.
So, just that update on Oxbo, Oxbo Bridge project for the summer, you have anything you need to close your committee?
I don't believe so. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone out there, so get ready for tomorrow. Thank you.
And we'll see you all next week at our regular session of council.